I want to have coffee at the hospital and like I've seen every inch of this hospital. I hope this doesn't bother you. I think it's great. I follow the police department. It's like a great district there. They go with things because some people walk along. I don't know. Sure, that's what I'm watching. Matthew. Or. So. Good day. He did like. No, most of them. He said he's interviewing. He was talking about. They're in contact. It is the director. They said he's a writer. Alright. Exactly. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying. My gosh, you're still here. It's our church. And I mean, I just. Sometimes. I'm going to check. It is the director. I said he's a writer. Alright. I think you would. I think I'll stay in that as long as I can. Well, I take it. You know, well, for that red fish, you're going to see more shit. There's some chopper. I don't resonate with that. It's quite hunting. Well, it's staying.[713.82]
Okay, uh, some announcements, uh, while it's not on the agenda, um, we may have some announcements here. One of which is that, uh, May seventh is, uh, recycling day here at City Hall between nine AM and two PM, uh, right here at City Hall. So if you have anything that needs to be recycled, there'll be someone here to pick it up and make sure it gets done. Ms. McGrew, do you have any, uh, announcements?
I do. Thank you so much. And Mayor, I'd like to thank you for allowing the public service announcements to be at the beginning of the meeting instead of the end like they used to because we have people in the audience to hear the announcements now. So I wanted to say thank you for this.
Thank you.
April twenty-eighth is the high school art show at the Cherokee Art Center. This showcases all of the high schools in Cherokee County, and you would not believe the caliber of artists we have. So I recommend that you go to the reception on April twenty-eighth at six PM to eight PM. May sixth is First Friday, downtown Canton. Streets are closed. The theme this, uh, month will be "We Are Canton." That takes place six to nine, and there'll be a band. May seventh, Historical Society's Derby Party starts at three thirty. These proceeds benefit the Cherokee County Historical Society. May twelfth, I'll come back to that one. That's important. April thirtieth, barbecue and brews to benefit For Canton. That's going to be in downtown Canton, twelve to eight, live music all day. Barbecue and brews is a fundraiser, hashtag For Canton, and that is, uh, part of Action Church. They do a lot for the community in that they have a warming shelter in the winter, food pantry, and clothing pantry for those in need. So I think you'll enjoy barbecue and brews. It's exactly what it is, barbecue and brews. Live music all day, which is always a plus. May twelfth, Joellen Wilson and I would like to invite all of you to join us for the first town hall meeting in Ward One. The town hall meeting will be at Sidelines Grill on May twelfth at six PM. We encourage everybody to attend, whether you live in Ward One or not. It's for everyone. We'll have department heads, city manager, mayor, and council, I hope, to be there to answer your questions. We will have a presentation on what's going on with the city, our goals from our retreat, and then it's going to be your turn to ask us questions and talk about anything that you would like to. This is going to be your turn to talk to us. We'll be there to listen to you. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes ma'am, go right ahead.
Uh, the Rotary Club of Canton has their annual fundraiser on April thirtieth, and all the proceeds benefit the Cherokee County nonprofits.
Okay, April thirtieth. And tickets available?
Oh yeah, you can see me.
See, see Joellen for a ticket to the, uh, annual Rotary, uh, at the Cherokee County Conference Center, April thirtieth, okay. Um, I would reflect back just, just a moment back to the May seventh, uh, recycling day and mention some of the items that are accepted at no charge, which include, um, personal computer, computers, laptops, modems, floppy, uh, disk drives, printers, US UPS batteries, CD ROMs, fax machines, cell phones, circuit boards, copiers, phones, PC power supplies, stereos, VCRs, CD players, scanners, keyboards, typewriters, microwaves, um, mouse or mice. Uh, that's what it says, mice. Ti- test equipment, uh, wire, cabling, network equipment, PC monitors, and car batteries. Items that are not accepted, uh, will be washers and dryers, uh, bin, uh, blenders, humidifiers, refrigerators, mixers, gas-powered vacuum clean, uh, gas-powered equipment. I've never seen a gas-powered vacuum cleaner before, but it's got gas-powered then vacuum cleaners, dehumidifiers, tools, uh, ovens, and household trash, okay. But that'd be a good time to get rid of some of your junk. Good, good time to clean out, some spring cleaning. Okay, um. Item four is consideration to approve the agenda. Before I ask for, for that, uh, I would like to say we need to add an executive session to the, uh, agenda here for potential litigation. Okay. All right, are there any other items, uh, to be changed, or is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Need to add the, um, fire station ninety percent plans to the agenda.
Okay, uh, under the, I'm hoping that's under old business.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, we'll just say H, fire station plans. Okay. All right, anything else?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second the motion.
Mr. Russ made the motion, uh, Mr. Goodwin seconded that motion to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Also in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the April seventh public hearing, April seventh special call meeting, and the April seventh, uh, two thousand and sixteen council many, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, are there any changes or corrections to be made?
Yes, on the, uh, public hearing meeting minutes.
Okay.
Uh, lists Roy Taylor as one of the speakers, and it lists him as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and he is not.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? Anything else? Any other changes or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Grant made the motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Russ seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, a ten-minute public input. Uh, we have two people signed up, uh, Mr. Bonner, Andy Bonner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Bonner, and I'm a Canton resident. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of the smoke detector battery replacement program for seniors sixty-five years old and the disabled. This program is offered in other cities such as Woodstock, Roswell, Rome, Gainesville, Cartersville, and also Cherokee County. The program is administered by either the fire department or the fire marshal. I think if we, I think we can all agree that if this program can save even one life, one family, one home from being destroyed, then the program will be a success. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Uh, next, Mark Rubelard.
Good evening. I'm Mark Rubelard. I'm an architect in the city of Canton. I'm basically catty-corner to y'all, and I wanted to just take a few minutes and talk to you about this proposed historic district. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you for the service that you do and the time that you put in to help our city. Secondly, I want to apologize to Mr. Ferris Young, because I vent his air pretty good a couple of weeks ago about this. But I, I, I believe strongly in it. I'm not saying that we can't have a historic district. I'm not saying that we don't need to protect our buildings. I think you need, as a group, you need to talk to the business owners in this city. I don't think you've done that enough. There's been four or five business owners in this downtown area that have approached me, and they're not in favor of this. I don't know what the answer is. I've been told it's to protect the buildings. You don't need this to protect the buildings. You do not. You have enough stuff in place now to protect the buildings. I've been told that it's, uh, for all the new stuff coming in, you don't need this to protect the new stuff. You have enough guidelines that you can dictate more or less what you want to see built. I think... I just really feel that, uh, your utopian view of a city isn't necessarily my view, and your view impacts me. I bought that building about eight years ago, and I paid a pretty good amount of money, and right after I bought it, we went through the toughest recession that I've ever seen. I've been able to hold on to it, but it's taken about everything that I've got. So I'm pretty impassioned about this. And so when you want to come in and dictate to me, when I bought that, no one told me we were in a historic district. And so now you're going to tell me, basically my trim is falling off because it's water rotting. So I've already started replacing it, but I guess now I have to come in, fill out an application. I have to fill out that. I probably have to pay a fee for review, I'm sure of that. I never had to do that when I bought it. It, it's impacting me, just a simple thing like changing the, the trim. I'm going to keep it the same color, but now I have to have another level of bureaucracy to approve what I want to do. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not saying you can't have a historic district. I just think it opens up a lot of things. I did this building. I restored this building. I restored this space, and I think it looks a lot better than what it used to. Is it historically accurate? No, it's not. We did Canton Theater. Is it historically accurate? No, it's not. We did, uh, one fifty Main Street. Is that historically accurate? No, it's not. We did the G Cecil Pruitt Community Center. That, by any stretch of the imagination, is not historically accurate at all. It's a more contemporary building. Go look up, I think you all need to do a little research. Look up Columbus, Indiana. It's a small town in the middle of a cornfield in Indiana. They have old buildings, they have new buildings, and they're right next to each other. And I think the diversity is amazing. And I'm just afraid that we're going to cut off that diversity if we go down this avenue. And why I say those listed buildings that I've pointed out aren't historically accurate, they're not. And I don't know how they would have been affected if we had this in place. It gets down to picking out the colors, and, and it's like the, uh, the old courthouse, the white marble courthouse. Yes, that is a gorgeous building. But have you ever looked at the trim color on the windows? It's the trim color that they used whatever sixty or eighty years ago. Was that in style back then? I guess it was. Or was that the paint that was on sale at Jones Hardware? I don't know. But did we have to dig down eight layers of paint and paint it that again? Could you have used a different color? I don't think you would have been allowed to with the guidelines that you're considering adopting. I've probably rambled on a little bit about this or that. I'm not asking for endless meetings on this. I think we need to protect our historic buildings. But I think you really should talk to some of the property owners in the downtown area. Thank you.
Item seven on our agenda is the consent agenda, and, uh, I will read each of those, and if there is any one that you would like removed for further discussion, we will do so. Uh, item seven A, approval of request to terminate Valick four fifty-seven B plan. Item, um, B, approval of resolution to endorse downtown development revolving loan fund application. C, approval of police department budget amendment for the payment of body cameras attachment seven. And D, approval of Georgia Power LED lighting for downtown. Is there any one of those that you would like to be taken off for further discussion?
I don't know that we need further discussion. I had one question on item C. It's for body cameras, but the budget amendment is for license plate readers. And I didn't know if they needed to do something about that before we voted on it, or...
It sounds like we did.
Yeah. I didn't know if we needed to pull it out, or if they could just correct that.
Is it body cameras, right, Mark?
I don't have seven B.
Seven C.
That was for the body cameras, though, not the license plate readers, right? Okay, yes.
It's coming from it.
So it is correct as it's written.
Okay.
Okay. So the money's coming from that account, license, where the license plate readers were. Is that right?
Last year...
Basically, the, uh, the item C should be approval of police department budget amendment for the payment of LPR. That's what it should be, that's what it should say. What happened last year is, if you remember, council approved back in August, um, for us to use money to be able to purchase body cameras. And, and that, um, the invoice came in after October one. So at that point, um, money came out of our sixteen budget to pay for the body cameras. And that money that was used out of our sixteen budget, we had budgeted for the LPR cameras.
Okay.
So we're just moving money.
I got you. That makes sense. Is that, is that okay?
So in effect, it, it is correct in both places.
It is, it's a little bit confusing there, yeah, I understand, right. Okay.
And I would make one note, Mr. Mayor, um, the Georgia Power agreement for lighting is not specific to downtown. It is lighting network-wise, city.
Yes. Any, any other questions or comments regarding that? If not, uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have, uh, okay. Ms. Wilson made the motion. Ms. McGrew seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Under old business, discussion and possible action on ordinance adopting the proposed Canton Historic District. Mr. Peppers?
Uh, would the Mayor and Council like to be able to discuss both of these items at the same time?
Oh, yeah, and item A and B, and the ordinance.
That might clarify some of the discussion if you have it. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Patton and, uh, Mr. Green and myself, we, we sat down with Bobby Dyer to talk a little bit about some of the concerns and issues that were raised at the, um, public hearing and at the work session. Uh, Mr. Dyer can speak a little bit about, um, the question as to whether or not to open up a minor certificate of appropriateness. Um, as we were looking at our specific table as to how individual projects fit within Historic Preservation Commission, maintenance-related items are those items in Roswell's HPC that they deal with through a minor certificate of appropriateness. In our guidelines, those maintenance items are handled at the staff level, so they would not ever come before the Historic Preservation Commission. And they would be able to be worked through at a faster pace than going through the public hearing process and all of that. Um, but Bobby can speak a little bit more to that.
And, and I think one key difference is, under our ordinance, maintenance items are exempt. So you're not required to get a permit at all. Whereas the Roswell thing, you had to get a permit. It was just issued by the staff, so...
Our ordinance says that repair and maintenance is exempt. They do not have to come before the Historic Preservation Commission, correct?
Correct, and the, the staff-level decision would be whether it's exempt or not.
Right, so that would, that would answer Mr. Rubelard's question about his gutter, whatever was falling off. He can fix that, right?
Well, it was the trim, I think is what he mentioned, and, and the definition of maintenance is that it does not materially alter the exterior appearance. So if it's the same color, my, I would think that not materially altering the exterior appearance, so...
So what I have is the trim's falling off. The metal roof has to be replaced. I don't have the money to do the metal roof, but does that mean I have to get the metal roof approved at some point?
Not if you're, not if you're going to replace it, as I understand, with exactly what you have now. It takes a permit to re-roof a house, anyway.
I'm going, it's a flat tin metal roof. I would replace it with a standing seam metal roof. I would try to match the color as close as I can. That's what I'm saying. It's, it's just these minor little things, like if you have to replace a piece of trim, and you're going to repaint it the same color, you're saying we don't have to get approval for that?
That's correct.
If I want to replace that metal roof, I more or less just have to get approval for it. I don't have to pay a permit fee or anything like that. Is that correct?
Well, you have to have a, I don't know if there's a fee or not. You have to get a, uh, permit to re-roof a house, any house, anyway, now.
Okay.
So would there be anything different to that?
Only if staff determine that they felt like it was a material change. And what, what they really try to say in the ordinance is a material change is, say you have a, a six-over-six type window system, and you decide to go to a solid sheet of glass over a solid sheet of glass. That is a material change. Um, if you are just replacing one of the panes of glass within that window that have cracked or broken, and you're replacing it with a similar-style glass, then that is not a material change. That would be maintenance.
But just to repla, to replace a roof, you don't have to go through the HPC, right? As long as you're, as long as it's the same general, uh, material and so forth?
If you change the roof line.
Well, roof line, yes.
But, but if you're, if it's going to look the same, you're exempt.
Or if you went from a change in materials from, say, a slate chingle roof to a metal roof, that would be a substantial material change.
Okay, Mr. Russ?
Billy, uh, it seems to me Mark has a tremendous advantage over almost anybody in the city. He's literally across the street. And when he needs advice, he'd come over and say, Ken, would you look out your window and tell me whether I can do this? I mean, seriously, and you don't need to worry so much about filing paperwork. If you don't need to file paperwork, Ken will give you his buzzing, send you out the door. But I think this can be very helpful to you in terms of determining what is or is not acceptable. And I, I, I think there's, we, we would allow as much flexibility as the rules apply, and, and applying them for him across the street is pretty nice. I mean, so we're not trying to make your life difficult. Maybe make it easier, I hope.
And those charts that spell out what, what types of changes are covered or not covered under staff review versus going to the, uh, commission, all of that is part of those links on the website relative to the Historic Preservation Commission. So it's all up there. Uh, once adopted, it'll still be available for the public to look at, so that if they do have a question, if they want to investigate it online, they can. If they want to call here, we can, we can hear about what they want to do and talk through it, you know. Um, even though it may not require a, a, a fee as it's associated with the Historic Preservation Commission, it may require some type of building permit fee depending on what they're trying to do.
Mr. Grant?
Also wanted to clarify, um, in response to the comment about, uh, being historically accurate. We're not, uh, pursuing a certificate accuracy. We're just pursuing a certificate of appropriateness. And buildings don't have to be historically accurate. They have to be appropriate and in keeping with the character and contributing to the character downtown. So it's not like we're asking people to go back and restore buildings to their original form, so...
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Um, I think at the, um, public hearing, I asked the question about oversight. Even if you're not in the, uh, Historic Preservation District, if you make a significant change, the oversight committee from the city will, will hear that about, about your, uh, changes. So there's not a substantial amount of change in that oversight. Uh, Historic Preservation acts as the oversight committee. But I have a question about the sequence. Um, if, if a property owner meets with Historic Preservation Committee, and they approve the change for appropriateness, then is that it? They don't have to come to city council? That is the end, right?
That's it.
The only time they would come before council is if HPC denied. Then they would have the right to come before a council to, to ask them to re-look.
Correct. The council is the appellate process for a denial.
So, you know, I had a, some, some folks ask me questions about, you know, it's going to be so long. It's going to take so long. Even if you're denied and you come before council, I would think that the process would only be thirty days, and I think in the ordinance, it's, limits it to about forty-five days. So I don't see a, a, a long amount of time getting approval for appropriateness. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, Mark had, had talked about diversity in the city. Anytime you have a new building, you have to get construction permits. And so you, you would go through the same process in order to build a new building, like one fifty Main or the YMCA and those type buildings. So I think the diversity is still going to be there. I think Historic Preservation makes us continue to be the quiet, I mean, the quaint, charming city that we always have been, and we want to continue to preserve. So I just offer that. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Grant?
I'd like to make a motion to, um, adopt the proposed Canton Historic District.
Second.
Uh, before, before you go, let me ask, is that you want to include the ordinance as well?
Should we do that as one motion, or to...
Separate.
It's up to the council.
Let's put them together.
Okay, I'll, uh, revise that then to adopt the historic, proposed Canton Historic District and the amendment to the Historic Preservation, Preservation Ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Grant, uh, made the motion. Ms. McGrew seconded that motion. Uh, Mr. Goodman, you have some comments?
Yes, um. Everyone knows that I'm all for Historic Preservation. I, my family owns three or four historic homes here in town, and I made the motion to keep the grammar school and the cotton mill offices, but, um, you know, I've received a lot of information from people, phone calls, and emails, and, and texts this week in particular. Many feel that this is just another layer of bureaucracy that we really don't need. Uh, they feel like our building department takes care of most everything that's already needed, and, um, they wanted me to speak on their behalf. Canton, in the past, has had quite a reputation of not being builder-friendly and not being friendly to those who wanted to do the work on their homes. We certainly want to make sure that, that that's done. But, uh, I'm not so for sure that this is the right step. I do appreciate all the people that are on this, on this committee, um, that are taking this to heart. And I certainly want Canton to look great. I mean, I've lived here all my life, and I want it to be the best place it can be. But I just think that maybe, uh, you know, we're overdoing what we need to do. Uh, this extra layer, I don't think is necessary. You know, and red tape, uh, seems that we have a little bit too much. I know some of our neighboring cities have, have a slogan, "We roll out the red carpet, not the red tape." Uh, you know, maybe we should put these people, our committees, to work helping our businesses that we have downtown already instead of putting more restrictions on them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, I, I realize that, you know, there, there is going to be a certain amount of additional, uh, burden, I guess you'd say, on, on some folks to have to go through this process, but, uh, you know, and, and we may find, we may find that there are instances where we really didn't think about that at the time, but that, we can change that. If we run into problems that we see as definitely a problem, uh, for, and affecting our, uh, city adversely, we can make changes to meet that. But this is an overall a good program, and it's going to mean a lot to the city in the long range, in the long term, so... Uh, Mr. Russ, you have something?
I was, I was, before you said it, I was going to say essentially the same thing. I think that this is the direction we want to go. Maybe it's not the right vehicle. Let's try it because it's the best on the table right now, and if it doesn't work, like the mayor says, we can change it. And I think that's real important, that people understand we're not casting something in stone, but certainly what we want to do as a city, and it's a statement we're making, and let's try it. If it doesn't work, it's too burdensome. We'll figure out another way. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? We have a motion on the table. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
All members voting for the motion, with exception of Mr. Goodman voting no. Okay. Item, item C, discussion and possible action on smoke detector battery place, uh, replacement program. We've talked about this a couple of times.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, after, uh, and council, after hearing from each of you, about some of the concerns and thoughts that you had on the proposal that was brought to you at the, uh, work session, we have simplified that information, I've given you a copy of it. Basically, this would set up a battery-only replacement program. We would not be replacing any smoke detectors. We would not be dealing with electric, electrical work as it relates to smoke detectors. This would allow any resident at age sixty-two, which ties in with our, our exemptions on taxes, to be eligible for the program or any resident with a disability to be eligible. They would call the fire department. We would take their information, uh, down over the phone. We, we won't require them to mail anything in or, or, or sign anything before they contact us. We will find out from them exactly how many batteries it is that we need to replace. We'll encourage them, if they have the batteries, to provide those for us. But if they don't, we'll have some available. It'll be limited to nine-volt batteries. We will not be replacing these ten-year batteries that, you know, that are, are very costly. It'll be limited just to those traditional batteries that are used in detectors. The only other caveat is that it will be for, uh, owner-occupied, uh, locations. For those individuals who are renters, uh, we will point them back to their landlords. That's the landlord's responsibility to make those, uh, devices in working order as part of their lease agreements. When we go out, we will be going out with non-fire suppression personnel. So we're not gonna send a fire truck out, uh, to do the work. It'll be scheduled, it'll be scheduled with a fire marshal, it'll be scheduled with, uh, the training officer or, or support service at the fire department. We'll schedule that at a time. If we have to reschedule because of an event, we'll take care of it at that point. But the only time we would, we would utilize a, a fire engine, uh, with this program is if, for instance, we got a call out with an alarm going off at a home and we got there and we realized the issue was a battery, we're in there, we might as well replace it at that time. But we wouldn't be scheduling trucks to go out. Uh, when we arrive, uh, they will sign off on our, our hold harmless waiver and then we will mail them a copy if they would like a copy after the fact. Uh, if we get in there and see that there's an issue with a detector, not the battery, we'll tell them they need to get it fixed. We're not doing that job.
Mr. Rust?
Make a motion to approve this program?
Okay, um, Mr. Rust made the motion, Ms. McGrew seconded the, the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Next item, action on intergovernmental agreement between Cherokee County and the City of Canton regarding paramedic training program participation. Mr. Peppers?
Agreement you have before you is the one that the county commission adopted. I have heard from some of you that you still have some concerns, so.
Well, I have, uh, I have concern on a couple of items within that myself. One thing that says under, on page two B, city provision of instruction hours. It says specifically, it's about the third line down in the, uh, second paragraph, specifically for each city employee participating in the training program, the city shall provide eight hours of qualified guest instruction and testing to each entering class. My question is, does that really mean what it says or does it mean something else? Because what, what it says to me is that if we have, if five of our firemen were participating in a class, that means we would have to commit forty hours of paying for a guest instructor to, uh, teach a class. Now, I'm not sure, I don't know that's what it's meant to say, but it certainly seems to say that to me. Uh, Mr. Rust?
Yeah, I, I read it like you did first, Gene, but I'm just looking at it now and it says, the latter, and that, end of that sentence says for each entering class. So it would seem like it's trying to, to specify the fact that it's for the class, not for the individual's forty, twenty, however many our times, eight hours. But that, that's.
It should, it should, it says each, each city employee participating.
Yeah, I know.
Shall provide eight hours.
We, we both pretty much understand what it is, but that's not quite what it says. So we, as long as we have clarification that we're not, like Gene says, not doing eight hours for twenty people or thirty people times, that's two hundred and forty hours or whatever, that's not, not gonna happen. So as long as we're understanding, and then, did you have something else?
Yeah, I had another item there, under, on page three, uh, under the general liability coverage, one A. It says the county and counties elected and appointed officials, officers, boards, commissions, employees, representatives, consultants, servants, I didn't know they had servants, agencies and volunteers are to be covered as additional insured as to the liability arising out of activities performed by city employees in connection with the training program. Now, I don't really have a big problem with that, but it needs to work both ways. This group of elected officials need to be covered by their insurance as well. And I don't know if that's the case or not. Does anybody know? Probably not. Huh?
There's a. I don't remember there being anything about county providing insurance in this agreement at all. So you'd be talking about their general liability policy anyway, so. But you could put in here that it goes both ways.
Well, I mean, it, it just seems like to me like it ought to be that way, ought to be. Uh, and one, one other item that, uh, I would prefer to see changed, although it doesn't matter that much, I guess, is this agreement may be amended, terminated. That's on page five at the top. May be amended, terminated or extended by mutual agreement of the parties. Any and all amendments must be written writing and must be agreed to and executed by the parties before becoming effective. I guess that does work both ways in that if, if we wanted out of the agreement at any point, we couldn't get out unless they said is okay and vice versa. But to me, it would make sense to have that either party, uh, should be able to terminate with some sort of, you know, timeframe or notice or whatever, uh, maybe lengthy, but that's just, just my thought.
Well, paragraph three does provide that it can be terminated about thirty days' notice.
Okay, so why don't we need paragraph one or two? I mean, that says exactly the opposite.
I don't, I'd strike the word terminated in that paragraph.
Okay, well, we, we need to strike, uh, under modification and extension, uh, number two, in my opinion, then you don't need that one. Or at least I can't see that you would need it.
Well, you need the paragraph, the word terminated would be a conflict. But you do wanna have amendments and extensions be by mutual agreement.
Yeah, that part of, yeah, absolutely, okay. Okay, anyone else have any, have anything?
Are we, are we able to enter into a fifty-year agreement?
Yeah, we can, with a, we can.
With another government.
With another government body, yeah. Mr. Rust?
In, in, in number two, Gene, are we just gonna, and Bobby, are we just gonna strike terminated then? Because it conflicts with number three? Because we wanna be able to amend and extend it by mutual agreement, but we don't wanna conflict in two what says, what's said in three. Is that, is that what we're gonna do? Gonna strike that one word?
That would be clearer. I'm, I'm not sure that, I think paragraph three controls over what two says, but to be clear, you would strike the word terminated.
Okay, thank you.
Out of the first sentence.
Yeah. That only, that word only, okay. Thank you.
Our hope would be in the future that when they bring us an intergovernmental agreement, we could discuss it before they vote and approve their side of it.
But, I mean, you know, if, somehow or another, I, I feel like the, it ought to be reciprocal as far as insurance coverage and so forth. If, if they're gonna demand that we have that, then it looks to me like they should also. And it, and, and allow our, their county, uh, their county attorney has the final say as to whether or not our insurance policy is acceptable or not. So we could do the same thing with our city, uh, city attorney. Maybe?
Well, we wanna do this agreement, so we just gotta get the fine tunes in here and, and so we're gonna reject it here at this point?
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying we reject it. I'm saying probably what we, what I would prefer is that we, uh, make certain minor changes in it and, and then bring it back at the next work session. Because we're still, I don't know that there's an urgency on it necessarily and, and the, uh, training is ongoing anyway. Uh, Mr. Grant, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just gonna, are we currently, do we have, currently serving under an intergovernmental agreement on the paramedic training?
No, and we haven't been.
Okay. So again, I, I would suggest we table it until we thoroughly review this and.
Postpone it till the next work session? When we could have some.
We can do that.
And I think at some point, somebody's gotta vote. So the fact that they voted probably is not that, because we can just say, no, here's what we'll approve and then they get to vote on it. Instead of passing versions back and forth. So next time, we'll make whatever changes you want.
And we'll vote.
You'll vote on it, send it back.
Oh, okay, that, that, that sounds fair enough. Okay, so do I have a motion that we?
Motion to table till the next work session?
We postpone until the next work session.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Grant, a second by Mr. Rust. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. All members voting for the motion, thank you. Till the May work session. Okay, next item. Action on Planning Commission Recommendation on Case MP sixteen oh one dash zero zero one, Riverstone MP, the Grand Reserve on Riverstone Drive. Mr. Peppers?
Canton Planning Commission held a public hearing on March twenty-first, twenty sixteen and recommended approval of the application submitted. Grand Reserve at Canton LLC has submitted an application seeking amendments to certain conditions of master plan MP zero six zero six zero zero one, specific area in which the amendments are sought as Pod H of the Riverstone Development. Pod H is located on the west side of Reservoir Drive and the north side of Reinhardt College Parkway, contains approximately forty-five point three four two acres. Original approval of Pod H in two thousand and seven allowed for forty-nine thousand square feet of commercial office space on the south portion, three hundred and twenty multifamily units in the middle section and a hundred and forty-eight single-family units on the northern section. Applicant is seeking, uh, forty-three thousand seven hundred square feet of commercial office, uh, area plus seventeen thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square feet of residential space in the south section. This residential space is to be located above the commercial office use. A hundred single-family units in the middle section and three hundred and nine multifamily units in the northern portion. The crux of this application is the request to change the approved locations between multifamily and the single-family areas. The applicant has stated the main reason for the requested change in location is the difficulty in the terrain in the middle area and pouring of such large, large pads for the apartment buildings. In addition, it has been stated that numerous retaining walls would be required. During the planning commission hearing, uh, there were six people in attendance. No one spoke in favor of the application. Those in opposition said their main concern was the potential lowering of their home values in Great Sky. The applicant stressed that their project's Class A units and will not contain any subsidized housing.
Okay.
I believe a representative is here as well.
Comment, uh, Mr. Goodman?
I read through this, but I wanna make sure, is there, did it say it had the potential to have some low-income housing there?
The document that the applicant dropped off with the elected officials yesterday, um, states that they will guarantee that there will not be any low-income units associated with their project.
And did it also say something about apartments?
Yes, because the, 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 the individual that dropped that information off is the apartment developer.
And how many apartments are they talking about?
Three hundred and eight units.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Ms. McGrew?
Yes, I'd like to know who owns this property, please?
Uh, the tax information, uh, says that the owner, um, forgive me, uh.
Sweetwater?
Sweetwater Investors LLC.
And does Sweetwater support this change in the site plan that was approved in two thousand and six?
Uh, the site plan in two thousand and six would not have been through Sweetwater.
Okay.
The property used to be under the control of, uh, Bright Sasser. And, um, there's another company out there, Fairways, Fair, Fair Green.
Do we have a site plan with these modifications on it?
Uh, there has not been a site plan submitted. Uh, they did initially bring in a conceptual drawing.
So we don't know if we have the support of the property owner for this variance change?
The, the owner should have signed the application, yeah, the owner signed the application, so yes.
Okay, so we do have owner's support on this?
Technically, the owner's asking for it, even though there's a developer presenting it.
What, what was the answer to that question? Did the owner actually?
Owner signed the application?
The owner signed the application.
I think there's a little bit of question in there because the packet that was delivered yesterday relative to the project doesn't include anything from the actual owner of the property. What it does include is a letter from the neighboring property owner, Bright Sasser.
But, but the owner, we wouldn't even have processed the application without the owner's signature. The owner has signed off on the application.
One of the things that I think that some council members have mentioned to me that we don't have, relative to that initial concept plan, uh, is that their second entrance, they have one entrance located on the north side of the property that would be a ride-in, ride-out gate. Uh, the south entrance, uh, opens up into the middle section of the pod and then intersects with, uh, Teasley Middle School. One of the things that we don't have as part of their proposal is some type of agreement with, uh, Sweetwater that shows how that entrance is gonna be dealt with. And this project is over two hundred units.
Can you have a second entrance without the permission of the other, uh, property owner? Can you just put it there?
It would be in the best interest, uh, for the development. It would be, um, we would require an agreement between the apartment developer and the owner of the adjacent property to provide, um, an easement agreement in perpetuity for ingress and, and degress out from the apartments.
Okay. And staff was at the planning commission meeting, am I correct? Staff was there, you and Mr. Patton? How did you advise the commission on this project? Did, what, did the commission ask you questions on how this is done? Can you explain the process of commercial property, apartments and single-family homes and why they are in the order that they are on, on, uh, site plans and in development?
Well, in traditional land planning, you have a, a step-down, uh, theory where you have your most intense use, say, on the corner where this commercial use is, then you'd have your apartments and then your single-family. That's traditional land planning. In this instance here, the, a developer has stated earlier that it's finding it difficult to, uh, pour such large slabs on the end piece. It's kind of a, of a financial burden there. And that's basically the reason that, that he wants to swap. The single-family home that's been approved there, that's a pretty, um, a dense development there as well. They're at seven units per acre. The apartments would be at fifteen units per acre. That's the maximum allowance that we have for multifamily housing in our UDC.
I noticed there's a pond on the property now. Uh, is that a retention pond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, that was built several years ago.
Was that on the initial, the original site plan?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it was.
Okay.
Mr. Grant? Sir? It was not on the original plan, so when they, so they graded it after that fact or filled in or whatever, is that correct? And, and amended that site plan subst- sites substantially, I guess, so that, uh, uh, the topo is different now. the topo is different now. So, did they, did they grade the site in a manner that that's middle section was less usable, knowing that that middle section was supposed to be single-family? Does that make any sense?
If I may, if I may interrupt, can this gentleman identify himself for sake of minutes?
Come on up, so we, so everyone can hear, if you will. He, I was a representative of the developer, I guess.
And I apologize for interrupting you.
Sorry. My name is Kurt Cooper. I represent the owners of the property. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. And I want to let you know, one of your answers, uh, the, the owners are familiar with this plan and they do support it.
Thank you.
So, wanna make sure that you're aware of that, and that there's also agreements between the parties that any access easements that are necessary for the development of it have already been pre-agreed to. We intend to cooperate with this apartment developer. We believe that it's an improvement to our property. We've visited, um, a, a property that they developed in Pelham, Georgia, just had their grand opening. And we came back with glowing reports from the mayor, uh, city councilman, fire chief, uh, planning director, that this company does what they say they're gonna do. And they're a credit to the development community. Build a, a very high-quality product, something that you'll be proud of to have in Canton. The evolution of the development of this property, uh, it was a part of this larger Riverstone development plan. They didn't have the benefit of having all the topo laid out. We've gone back to the original declarant, um, Bright Sasser, who put all this property together in the first place. Had conversations with them. They support what this, um, apartment developer wants to do, and has, they've provided a letter stating so. In addition, this property, when it was prepared for the last group that had, uh, modified the original approved Pod H plan, they added, to answer Mr. Grant's question about has the topo changed, the topo has changed in that they diverted a river and made a, a wet detention area. And that has caused some challenges for this development of this property. And as you can imagine, one developer leaves, a new developer comes with different ideas for the, the best use of the property. And we believe the developer that we have for the apartments right now has the best development plan for the property and to enhance the value of the balance of our property and create a very nice development here at that corner of Riverstone and Reservoir Drive.
Okay, what city was that? You said you just completed something?
Pelham, Alabama, and-
Pelham?
Pelham, and, and Pelham is a suburb of Birmingham. And just in support and to add more to our visit there, this was, um, just ten days ago that we went over and, and saw their grand opening. And Pelham went from being about the tenth-rated suburb of Birmingham to now the third-rated. And they've just built a brand-new school, and what's interesting to me, and having gone there and, and visited, Pelham just got into their, having their own school district. And they've just built this beautiful new, uh, elementary school right next door to this apartment that, uh, they've built. And it's at the Grand Reserve in Pelham, and it is, um, first-class, has all the amenities. There's, uh, tanning booth, there's, uh, pool, there's weight room, there's, uh, sauna, there's everything there for their residents. They even have, uh, city workers that are living in their community. And they're gonna be the nicest apartments in the market here.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I'm just trying to understand, so the two thousand and six master plan, um, that, does that cover the, the master plan for that whole area?
The entire Riverstone area.
We're talking about Pod H, uh, which originally was to include mixed-use, multifamily, and single-family, correct?
That is correct.
This project, however, we're wanting changes just for one of those uses, which would be the multifamily, correct? So we don't have any master plans or site plans as far as the single-family or the mixed-use?
It, it was submitted, yes, sir. There was a, there was a plan that showed where the apartments were being built, and we've, by the way, I don't, I don't know if this is important to you or not, but I think it's worth stating. The development plan that we're moving, asking the city council to allow us to alter, had higher densities for both single-family and the apartments. So, we were actually giving up some density to make this plan work better. Um, we've gone from about eighteen units, apartment units per acre that was approved with the current plan as it is, to fifteen units per acre. We are moving it to the north where it's, um, of a more favorable development profile. And, uh, again, to get to the question that you asked about has the topo changed from the original Pod H, there was no lake shown at that point in time. So there was a developer that came in after Pod H was originally laid out. They came back and modified the plan once before, and now we're here again trying to get that modified because that plan did not come to fruition.
Well, my question was, within Pod H-
Yes, sir.
We're talking about moving the multifamily. And that's the plans we've seen, that's what this discussion is about. In that move, have we all seen any master plans or site plans as far as when you moved the multifamily, what's gonna happen to the single-family and what's gonna happen to mixed-use?
Yes, sir. The, the, the- The retail is staying the same. The mixed-use is staying the same where it was. We've made no change to that. So essentially, the apartments are moving to where we had single-family previously laid out. And the single-family is moving to where the apartments had been previously laid out. Now, the apartments had, um, on this previous plan, had wrapped around this lake somewhat, um, which is what we're talking about with the topography having changed, and we think that the single-family's going around this lake will be a real nice development. They'll have nice views of this, uh, wet detention area, which is really becomes a lake.
Mr. Dyer?
I think some clarification will help with your question. I mean, what existed was called a site plan, but it's, it's a conceptual site plan. This, this is gonna go here, this is gonna go here, this is gonna go here. They have prepared the same thing, just flipping two of them. So we have as much information now as we've ever had.
But we have no plans on the single-family or the mixed-use other than that?
Yes, to the same detail we had before. They got little, you know, little buildings drawn in everywhere, sort of showing a general layout of, of development, which is, which is all we had before.
Which is, which doesn't consider whether you can actually put them there or not?
Correct. Nothing, nothing had ever really considered what it would be built. It was just all conceptual. And, and so we're, all they're really doing is changing that conceptual to flip the single-family and the apartments. Now, they've gone a little more detail about the apartments because somebody's actually there to start building them.
The only thing we're in the seat of downstairs is the concept plan-
Can't hear you.
The only thing we have downstairs is the concept plan that was provided by the apartment developer relative to the apartments. We don't have any other drawings as it relates to the single-family in the middle portion of the development as they're asking it to move.
But we, but we have a new Pod H, don't we, Steve? I mean-
Yes, you do.
All that, that they have submitted was their plan for the, uh, the apartments to be on the north end of the property. The single-family and the commercial, as Mr. Cook said, will stay-
Well, they're the same, they're just moving, right.
Right.
Actually, we, we did, we did submit a plan, a site plan, that shows not only the apartment, but also the relationship of the single families. There's a hundred single-family footprints on the plan. It's there. It's been submitted. The entire Pod H has been delivered to planning and zoning as a part of our application. We, we basically redesigned the entire Pod H mount. Now, let me back up one step and tell you that what was, what has been approved and what we're continuing to work with is the mixed-use component of that site plan. So there's been no change on the retail, office, uh, residential, mixed-use portion. The only thing that's changed is we're taking the apartments from where they were located, moving them northbound. Single-family that was approved, northbound, southbound.
So, but the mixed-use, you, you don't have a developer in place now? That'd be a separate developer?
That will be, could be, yes. Um, the, the apartment developer has not signed up to do the single-family. But we have a lot of interest for, from people to do the single-family and the mixed-use, um, trying to take this one bite at a time.
And, and my question on topography in the last meeting-
Yes, sir.
Was, I know the topography originally in the pond wasn't there, but when the current property owner now for that tract, was the topography there when they purchased the tract?
It was.
Okay.
I have a question.
Ms. McGrew?
And the, and the plan, and the plan that we, the development plan.
Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Cooper?
Yes, ma'am.
You, uh, we have a letter from Matt Sasser, who owns the property, uh, another section of the property, not Pod H, correct? And then we know who the developer is of Pod H, correct?
Correct.
And do we know who the owner is of the, of the commercial property?
Uh, that would be Sweetwater.
So Sweetwater-
And I represent, I represent Sweetwater, okay? And Sweetwater is selling off a portion of this forty-five acres to, um, the apartment developer.
Where is the second entrance, the, the main entrance into what you have proposed for the apartments, is right across from Teasley Middle School, correct?
There's-
And where's the second entrance?
To the north.
And is that on your property that is with Pod H, or is that on another property?
Both, both entrances are on Pod H, so our property, um, property that we hope to sell is about twenty-two acres where the apartments are to go. And one driveway is on their property, and the other driveway would be a shared driveway for the rest of the development. So there'll be cross-access between the apartments, um, single-family and the mixed-use development.
But both of those, both of those entrances and exits are on the Pod H property?
That is absolutely correct.
Ms. McGrew?
Yes, thank you. I'd be very uncomfortable approving a plan without a signed agreement from Sweetwater. An easement, whatever the proper terminology is for that second entrance.
We have it in our contract. I can assure you that, that that's, not only, um, driveway easements, but construction easements, utility easements, it's all been, um, thought through. And we know that we need to cooperate in the development of the balance of the property, so that's, rest assured, that's been thought through and, and has been, um, covered.
Good. My other concern is, um, you mentioned there's been a redesign of Pod H, and I have not seen a plat of that.
The, the what has been redesigned?
I heard the words redesign of Pod H. I've only seen the original.
As, I'm sorry, I was li-
That's okay. Um, when you, you were talking, uh, someone mentioned that there was a redesign of Pod H?
Correct. That, that redesign basically is the apartments being relocated, the single-family units being relocated in their footprint. So there's a hundred and, uh, a hundred footprints for single-family on this Pod H. And then what the council had previously approved for the mixed-use portion of the property, which is office, retail, and, um, dwelling units, it could be up to three stories, that's remaining exactly where it had been previously approved. So there's no change to that portion of it.
Okay, and one more question, and Mr. Green, you might be the one to answer this, but whoever can answer it, jump right in. As far as the single-family dwellings, I see that there are a hundred and thirty-four scheduled now instead of, um, one forty-eight, one forty-eight, so one thirty-four on seven point three, point zero three acres. Can you describe how big a house would be and how close together they would be?
Actually, they're approved for, uh, minimum lot lines, but there's a hundred of them, not a hundred and thirty. And that's a down, um, a reduction of what we had been previously entitled to. And there is a site plan that shows the footprint of those units on the streets going through the subdivision.
Okay, the information we received yesterday, and Mr. Dyer, feel free to jump in. It tells me that- there are three-plus acres of single-family, uh, with a hundred and forty-eight homes. Then the next page says that there is, um, a hundred and thirty-four units on with seven-
I will clarify, there's, there's number one plan, number two plan, and number three plan.
Jiminy Crickets.
What, what happened was, just so everybody, everybody thinking weird things were happening, there was a master plan approved. This had to go through a DRI process at the Atlanta Regional Commission. They made suggestions, and the plan was changed. So the second plan was adopted ultimately by the city council, adopting the ARC recommendations. So that's what sits there now. What they are proposing is the third plan.
Thank you.
Which would have fewer houses in, in one and two.
On twenty-eight years, okay.
A little smaller.
So those would be some very tiny houses.
Small lots.
Small lots, with tiny houses.
And if I may jump in, on their application, they did submit a, a conceptual site plan for-
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
On their original application that they submitted, they did submit an entire conceptual layout for Pod H that showed the commercial, the single-family, and the multifamily, as, as Mr. Dyer mentioned.
So would that mean that the, uh, single-family area could be used for single-family?
Yes, sir. That's what they're proposing.
Even with the topo that's there?
Commercial is still on, not on Rivers, not on, not on Reservoir Drive, on Reinhardt Parkway, Reinhardt College.
There's a small portion of it.
Commercial is still on the main road.
Of the main portion is on reservoir, I mean, on-
If you've, if you've seen the application, you've seen this plan that they're talking about, it's just a drawing.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, and I, and I was, um, wanna back up, uh, Mr. Cooper, to something you said, because we're talking about the apartments in conjunction with the single-family and the mixed-use, but I just heard you say, um, that Sweetwater is selling only the portion for the apartments for this project, so we're really only talking about the apartment project.
Well, we're, we're under contract for the apartment portion of it right now. That's correct.
But Sweetwater is just gonna sell those twenty-two acres where you now want to place the apartments, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
In my mind, that's a different project, but-
And that, that's, again, point of clarification. This, this isn't a rezoning, it's a master plan change. All of this is approved already. They're just asking to change the master plan by switching the apartment component and the single-family home component. Well, I mean, it's a change in Pod H, but it's a master plan change. These things were already allowed.
But to be clear, the, the reason for the change is for the apartment project only.
Well, I, I don't know if you can say that, that's just what's, that's just what's being talked about getting built. The single-family's changing as well. It's going from one place to the other.
May, may I speak and address a couple of things, and I certainly-
Please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Scott Tecotti, and I represent the developer. I'm also a licensed real estate agent in, uh, Georgia, and helped find the land, uh, to build these apartments. I was involved in that. I've financed numerous properties through, uh, life insurance companies and also Freddie Mac for the developer. He has completed two hundred and ninety units in Spring Hill, Tennessee, which is a suburb of Nashville, south of Nashville, finished that about four months ago. Just recently finished another project in, uh, Pelham, which is, uh, outside Birmingham, a hundred and eighty-four units. What he wants to do is bring Class A apartments to this city, market rate, not subsidized housing. And so, you know, when we were doing a market study, we've been working on this whole plan since probably last June when we met with Mr. Green a few times in the summertime, just going over what the city would like and what have you. We assured Mr. Green that our plan is market-rate, uh, rents, market-rate housing. We're talking that rents are twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars. The, uh, the market is in short supply of market-rate apartments. And when I say apartments, I'm saying Class A, nice apartments. And when I say apartments, I'm saying Class A, nice apartments, that we all would want to live in. The, the, we have looked at the overall site plan, the middle section, the topography of it. I've already discussed with some builders what type of product can go on there. This property is already zoned for a certain density, which we're lowering the density. It's already zoned for a certain type of lot-line configuration. What you would see in the middle section of this property would be a hundred single-family houses that would probably sell for about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, two-story, nice houses. Um, the apartments, Class A apartments. Um, you know, I, I assume that the way it's zoned today, with, if you had apartments in the middle, you could still bring in tax credit deals or subsidized housing or what have you. We're interested in bringing this property up to Class A apartments, bringing in two-and-a-half million dollars of tax, real estate tax revenues, and the city doesn't get all of that, but the county does, over, say, ten years. The tax, real estate tax is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand roughly on these units. So, you know, the bottom line is, is my client, who I've done like eight, I've been involved with eight apartment projects, Class A property, he gets the endorsement of the mayor, the city, like Kurt was saying, he was just at a grand opening in Pelham. And, you know, everybody's very happy about it. It's a big improvement for the area, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the property or the developer. Um, I've been working on this since last June, so I'm pretty intimate with all of the intricacies of it. So I'll be happy to.
Ms. McGrath?
Answer any questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson.
Looked the wrong way. Mr. Green, I ask you at the work session, if the planning commission asked for the staff recommendation, and you said they did not. And I said, well, I'm asking you now, and you said that you would not recommend approval. In light of all you've heard and re-studied, are you still, are you still saying that you would not approve this, or, and why, if so?
Well, again, in traditional land planning, you go from the most intense use to the least intense use. However, with what, um, these folks submitted, uh, yesterday, they have a list of, of suggested conditions that they would be willing to, um, impose upon themselves if this would be approved. The Class A apartments there is certainly a plus. They would, um, they're guaranteeing that there's no subsidized housing there. The way that it is currently, as Mr. DeCotty said, anything could go in there. You could get, uh, subsidized, uh, Section Eight housing.
Steve, would it not require a development agreement in order to allow those conditions to be, um, implemented?
That would be a, a marketing, uh, a concept by the apartment owner, that they would be imposing upon themselves only, uh, market-rate apartments to be built there. That's not something that the city would enforce.
Ms. Peppers?
We could add it in our ordinance. All these things would be conditions of the approval of the master plan change. No rent subsidies, all, there's a list of them that Mr. Chambers had, uh, suggested. All of that can be done in the approval of the master plan change.
In fact.
And we can put in the requirement of the second entrance, and that you have to have the, all this can be put into the approval.
So, so, so here, here's the issue as I see it. I was just made aware that several years ago, the council stopped receiving the full application packet for all of these things. So you haven't seen the plan that was submitted that perhaps the planning commission has seen. I would suggest that you table it, get all of that information. We can sit down with Mr. Chambers and hear more from him, hear, figure out a way to incorporate some of the things that they would like to self-impose into a motion, and, and, and deal with it at the next available meeting. And that might make you a little bit more comfortable, and we'll know exactly what's going on. Ms. McGrath?
I think you read my mind. I was going to make a motion that we postpone this, get more information, see the site plan, take care of the conditions and our ordinances, and then come back and discuss it in May.
Okay, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, uh, Ms. McGrath made the motion, Mr. Grant seconded the motion, uh, other discussion, Mr. Rust.
Um, I just wondered, and I asked the developers here, is that going to make a difference to you in terms of what you're trying to do timewise?
Uh, no, it would not. If it would make everyone comfortable, we're very good with that, no question.
Because the way I kind of made some quick notes here is that you're going to reduce the density of the single-family by these, this flip-up, by thirty-four homes. You could actually put a hundred and thirty-four in there, correct?
The single-family, which we would not handle, another builder would handle the single-family component.
Right, but it could be.
Would be feasibly a hundred houses is probably the number.
Yeah, but it could, it was zoned for one thirty-four.
Yes, it, yes, yes.
And, and you're reducing the number of apartments per acre by three apartments per acre, and you're, you're upgrading the class of apartments that can be built. So if we were to deny you, this would default to a worse situation for the quality that that property is going to be developed.
No question.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question, you, you mentioned a hundred homes. Now, that's, a hundred homes is not on this property that's in question, right? It's on the pod, but it's not on that property, right?
Correct.
So how could you, how could you say a hundred homes, if somebody else buys that, could they put more homes in there?
No, this is all part of a master plan for all of Pod H. I know you're focusing on.
They could put more than, more than a hundred, because it said it was approved for a hundred and thirty-four, right?
Approved for a hundred and thirty-four, but the new plan would only, would have a hundred. That's what they're proposing. They're proposing to change the master plan to say a hundred homes in the middle part. If you approve this, it will be a hundred homes.
Okay.
Story.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, you have something?
I hate to belabor this point, but I do want one other thing, a little clarification. Um, Sweetwater Properties is willing to put up seventy-five thousand dollars toward a traffic light, correct?
Y- yes.
Yes, and it wa, it was.
At, at Reservoir and, and Reinhardt.
It was stated that it would be, um, towards improvements to Reservoir Drive, so it would be at, um, others' discretion other than ours. But those funds are available for improvements to Reservoir Drive.
Right, I realize that we probably have to get D O T permission to put in another light, correct?
Right. We try, we tried to leave it, leave it open to your discretion.
But you're, but you're going to put seventy-five thousand dollars in escrow that, that the city could use for a light if they had approval.
That's, that's, that's correct. That is absolutely correct.
How much do lights cost?
More than seventy-five thousand, usually.
How much?
Two fifty.
More than seventy-five?
I think two fifty.
We might need to look at that.
Steve?
Teasley Middle School.
Sweetwater, they own that too.
Oh, Sweetwater owns the commercial and the apartment.
Sweetwater owns the whole thing, about Pod H.
The entire Pod H.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get. They do not.
They own the rest of Riverstone. Brightsasser just owns other properties somewhere else. No, no.
To fill in maybe a missing blank, Brightsasser was the original master developer. So there were a number of pods within this master development. They still own some pods, some pods were sold off. This Pod H was sold off some time ago.
Thanks, Mr. Rust.
Just one last thing, if we had gotten this information a little bit earlier, I think we'd be more comfortable taking action tonight. So just give us a little time, we'll try to get this done.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting with a motion. Okay. Next item, discussion and possible action on the hotel-motel tax budget amendment.
Mr. Peppers?
Yes, you have a budget amendment, uh, in front of you, um, that would, uh, increase our hotel-motel tax revenues by seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, at the beginning of this fiscal year, we budgeted four-hundred-and-five thousand in the hotel-motel tax. Uh, based on our revenues that have been coming in, uh, we're going to hit at least four-hundred-and-eighty thousand. This allows us to go ahead and recognize those funds, uh, from an expenditure standpoint. Additionally, we have, uh, about, uh, a little over two-hundred thousand dollars in hotel-motel tax reserve. Um, and so, uh, this budget amendment pulls ninety-three thousand, seven fifty out of that reserve to put to use. Um, it has it allocated as follows. Um, the increase in revenues, um, of seventy-five thousand, we would earmark eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty of that for Canton Tourism, um, as it aligns with hotel-motel tax laws, uh, that we're under. Uh, additionally, uh, we would be, um, putting seventy-five, the, putting seventy-five thousand dollars of those, um, uh, funds into the branding study. If you'll recall, when we started the fiscal year, we had set aside a little bit of money in hotel-motel tax for advertising, and then we had some funds coming from the rental car tax to be used towards this branding study. Uh, as we recognize these additional funds in hotel-motel tax, those are funds that need to be spent within the year that they're collected. The rental car tax is not held to the same restriction, uh, so in speaking with our CFO, it made more sense to spend the hotel tax dollars on the project and leave the rental car funds for, for other uses, uh, that council may deem fit. Um, uh, so seventy-five thousand would be earmarked for the branding study. Additionally, we would take seventy-five thousand dollars and transfer that into the general fund to assist in the creation of a communications office. As you know, at the, at the council retreat, the number-one priority was coming up with a better communication strategy for the city. Uh, this would allow us to do that, uh, and I've provided you some additional information on that. And then we would be, um, providing, like I said, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to Canton Tourism, to spend as follows. Uh, we would like for them to earmark four thousand dollars of that in sponsorship of the barbecue and brews event. Another four thousand dollars in sponsorship of the Wing and Rock Festival, uh, that's coming up. Um, and then ten thousand dollars for a Canton billboard campaign, uh, to get that started for the city.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded it.
I will say that this is one of the items that we discussed at the retreat, and I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. Maybe we voted twice, I don't know. All right, uh, let's see, the next item. Discussion and possible action to award contract for the preparation of wastewater treatment plant, D D R, uh, to E S I.
As you'll recall at our work session, we discussed that we had received approval from the Environmental Protection Division at D N R uh, to increase our discharge, uh, from our wastewater plant from four million gallons a day to eight million gallons a day. Uh, and, and you'll recall that we discussed that there were three particular items that would need to be addressed from a, from an administrative standpoint as it relates to paperwork, uh, to, to give back to E P D so that they could formally approve, uh, that increase. Uh, we had discussed the E S I is already working at the wastewater plant on the expansion, uh, and I had asked you if, if, if that's the route you would want to go in, in providing them with, uh, the opportunity to get that work done for us. And it, it seemed like the council was favorable on that. Mr. Hatabian's here, he can speak a little bit more about the, the project and, and the information that's submitted to you for this agenda.
Any questions, comments? Only question I would have, I guess, is, uh, and I don't, would not debate the need for, uh, continuing to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant. But what was the projected growth, basis for the projected growth, or the projected growth, which was, was the basis for the need for this expansion? I mean, what did you use to say, okay, we're going to grow, what's our population going to be in five years, ten years, fifteen years? Was that in consideration as, as we looked at this?
Uh, not really. What's really driving it is how much flow is coming into the plant and how much we can treat.
But.
Then, also looking at what we've made in previous commitments. You know, years ago, there were a lot of agreements that were made, there were actually some prepaid taps that were made, um, but haven't been developed.
So maybe we need a twelve-million gallon instead of eight.
Well.
Without looking at those numbers and projected growth, I don't know how you calculate that.
Well, the, the eight million gallons also, um, is, is pretty much as much as we can put on this site. It also corresponds to the, um, was it the North Metro Georgia Water Planning District? And in that document, it says this, you know, that's, that's the limit that this facility will go up to. Um, anything beyond that, you're probably looking at additional or another site, because there is, is no more space on that site to go be, you know, even eight may be a, you know, pushing it, but.
I guess my question is, if we need ten million, do we want to build eight million on that site, even though we're in, and have, have two million left over for somewhere else?
Yeah, and, you know, kind of a rule of thumb for a, a good aggressive growth is about a hundred thousand gallons per day, per year increase, you know, it's a steady, steady increase. So you're looking at, I don't think there's going to be math involved, but, uh.
It's three thousand gallons per house.
Well, no, I'm just, no, I'm just looking at, if you do a hundred thousand gallons per day, per year, that's, um, ten, with four million gallons is what, four years? Four, let's see, a hundred thousand, yeah, four years. So you, you, you should be good for a while at, at eight.
I think the bottom line to your question is that we're going to have to do this work to make sure that we can physically get this site meeting the specifications that E P D has brought to us as it relates to pH balance and phosphorus and all of that, um, before we even know what the cost of an expansion of that site might be. So having this work done provides us with some documentation to give us an idea of what that site can handle, and that E P D is comfortable with what that site can handle. I think, on the whole, though, the direction that Mayor and Council wants to go is this water and wastewater master plan, and this is a portion of information that can be used as part of that master planning process. But we also have a year to get this done. So this information can already be done, already be in the books, and handed off to whoever's doing that master plan at their overall study of the city to say, here's another location for a wastewater facility if you need to go to twelve million gallons a day. But here's also the process you're going to have to follow to get to twelve million gallons a day with the North, North Metro Water District with E P D and everybody else. This is kind of the, the, the check first. We already have this site, we already are treating wastewater at this site. If we choose to expand on this site to what we've been allowed, this is the documentation necessary to get to that point.
Okay, uh, Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that we've been approved for the eight million gallons, go up to that at the current location, but we have to do these three studies to get final approval for that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, Mr. Grant made the motion, uh, Mr. Rust seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay, the last item, item H would be, uh, fire station plans.
I'm going to invite our guest up here from, uh, Wally Wilson, and they can talk us a little bit through the fire station plans. You have been given a copy, these are the ninety percent plans, uh, on the fire station, and I'll turn it over to Alfonso to further explain, answering questions that you might have.
Okay, let, let me, let me ask one real quickly. Obviously, uh, I don't know if anyone else has or not, but since we just got these, I don't think, you know, we've really had a chance to really even look, look through some of them. But the important thing to me now, what is this, what is the schedule? When, when will, uh, the hundred percent be done? When will the, uh, project go out, be advertised for bids, and when will bids be, uh, accepted, the deadline for them?
Um, my name is Alfonso Inchausti, I'm with Wally Wilson, a project manager.
Get a little bit, could you get a little bit closer to that thing?
Sorry.
Uh, Mr. Peppers, would, Mr. Peppers, would you, uh, before our next meeting, will you fix that limber thing right there? That thing just will not stand up, okay? Fix it so it'll, people can adjust it to their mouth. Thank you.
My name is Alfonso Inchausti. I'm with Wiley Wilson. I'm a project manager. And we submitted ninety percent yesterday to you guys. And the hundred percent will be done May nineteenth. Within, May nineteenth, we'll be submitting the hundred percent drawings. After that, it will be about two months of advertising or go for bid and we start construction probably in August. That's what I think the, the, the schedule was, was that, Mr. Peppers?
I believe the last schedule I saw was July, wasn't it? Or was it?
We will, I mean, we're trying to, to, to meet that deadline together between July and August. For start construction, it will take about under eighty days, which about by January, you should have.
Yeah, is, is the other ten percent of this, is that anticipated changes or is, what does ninety percent mean? What have you left off?
Basically comment from you and QC and if you have any changes, we, we incorporate the changes. That's what.
So if there were no changes, this would be it?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Grant?
Yes, regards to the schedule, and again, we just got these this evening, so, but.
They're perfect.
The schedule on C four point four, there's a new schedule showing completion of the station in December. Is that correct? Is that for?
We, right now, we have two, two, two fire stations and the building, it's been supposedly, the original plan was to, having finished in six months, but the contractor has got good weather and is being able to gain a month. So if you start in August, we probably will have it done by January. But if the weather come, you know, cooperates, will be done by December.
Okay, so the schedule on this is?
We will change that. Yeah, we will, we will update the, the schedule.
So you're going to update it?
I mean, basically, the ninety percent, I'm, I'm thinking is going to happen, the completion of this project to be done at the end of December or January. Yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to confirm with Mr. Peppers. I know we'll spend more time with this than our limited knowledge, so will our billing department be reviewing these in detail and, and offering suggestions for the ten percent?
Correct. Mark Crosby and his staff got their copy this morning. They've started their review. They will provide notes. We were also provided with a spec book, which is about that thick. We're going through that right now. We'll provide notes on that. We will provide those notes back to Wiley Wilson. Any comment that we have from this point forward, we'll put in a memorandum format and make sure you have that as well so that we're all working off the same page as those changes come in in this last ten percent.
And is that feasible by May nineteenth?
Well, we think so. And part of the reason why we wanted to get this before you tonight is that if those plans are available to us even a day before the nineteenth, if we needed to, we could bring it to you. You would know about any changes ahead of time. And if we could physically get it voted on at the nineteenth meeting, then we think we could probably start the advertising a little bit earlier and shorten that, shorten that range in the middle so we can get started on construction faster.
Is there anything that we can do to make sure that happens when we get the station?
As you look at these, if you can get me your comments back on them as soon as possible. And, and we'll be compiling ours with a goal to get those done in the next week.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Russ, yes?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is a pretty big document. And what we need to do is just hang on to it until the nineteenth is a, is a, is a day of, of council meeting. So if we got some changes, major changes at five o'clock, it might be tough to vote on it. But anything we can do to get it in ahead of time would be helpful. And my suggestion certainly is that only highlight the page and number, whatever the changes is, because doing it all over again doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yes, I, I would, I would suggest that any member of this council that has, and once you go through this, that has any questions or comments, that we get them to the city manager, I'd say no later than, say, ten days from now. I mean, that ought to be enough. I mean, I, I know I'm not going to understand everything that's in there, but, you know, if I find something to question, you know, I'll certainly raise that question and send an email to the city manager to, to do that. And I would ask everyone else. Let's not wait until, as you say there, you know, the nineteenth of, of May or whenever and to do that. Let's go ahead and get, get the information or questions or comments in as quick as we can because we need to expedite this as fast as possible.
And I would just mention too that Alfonso is new to our team on this. Since he started, we've had very good communication back and forth, and I think we'll continue that in this last ten percent and get this, get this done faster. Mr. Grant?
Yes, and, and again, knowing that Mr. Cosby is going to review these in detail is great. Just as soon as he could get us, you know, his perspective or executive summary or something from the building department that we can look at, especially prior to that nineteenth, again, anything we can do to ensure approval on the nineteenth, I think it's in our best interest.
Absolutely. Let me ask, are, are you also looking after the ball ground and Holly Springs construction?
Yes, I am the one. I, I'm the one that doing the construction.
I know both of those are out of the ground now.
Yes, that's what I was talking about, that they, they, you know, this, the, the, the construction is supposed to last six months, but the contractor, because of the good weather, has been able to reduce the time. So he's doing good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry.
Mr. Alfonso, it's nice to meet you. I didn't get your last name.
Inchausti.
But we didn't meet you and you came all the way. So can you tell us who you are and what your position is with the company?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Jabari Lamumba and I'm an architectural designer with Wiley Wilson. The architectural portions, yeah. Coordinated with the, the engineers.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We want to get this thing taken care of. Now, we want to move, move forward with it and get it done. Okay, next item, city manager's report.
I have three items tonight. First item I want to bring to the attention of the city council is relative to the speed on East Main Street. If you'll recall, back in February, council asked staff to move forward with twenty-five mile an hour speed zone on East Main Street out to Brown Industrial Park. As part of that process, we changed signs. We also reached out to the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Georgia State Patrol as it relates to enforcement within that area. They did ask us to do a speed study. We did a speed study and the eighty-fifth percentile speed that came back in that area is forty-two point two five miles per hour. According to the state, we are only allowed to adjust from that eighty-fifth percentile speed, five up or five down, to be able to enforce it. So that means that we will have to adjust the speed limits back up from twenty-five to be able to enforce the speed limits between Ship Street and Brown Industrial. One positive thing that has come out of this, that, that, in the past, GDOT had approved for the speed coming west on twenty at Canton Marketplace to be at forty miles per hour, though they had signed it at forty-five. And so they have since gone back and changed the speed limit signs out in front of Canton Marketplace on the westbound lanes down to forty. In addition, we had in the past a situation where there was one posted speed limit on the westbound side of East Main Street and a different speed limit on the eastbound side of East Main Street. Due to the speed study, we will be able to go and make the speed the same on both sides of the road, which is nice. It does mean that we will not be able to enforce twenty-five mile an hour until you get to Ship Street. Ship Street into downtown is considered a historic district. I have asked the police department and the city attorney to look into how that historic district is laid out. As you know, in that area, you can enforce speed at one mile an hour above the historic district, so they're going to look into that. But we will be having to go out and change those signs back to the appropriate speeds based on distance. And that will be above twenty-five miles an hour so that we can enforce it. It'll still be twenty-five miles per hour in the school zone.
Mr. Grant?
Mr. Peppers, you had outlined in a memo to us where those would transition would be from forty to thirty-five, I think, to thirty to twenty-five?
Yes, sir. So right now, Ship Street is at twenty-five miles per hour coming into downtown. It will remain that. From Ship Street out to Jeanette Street, it'll be thirty miles per hour. At Jeanette Street, from Ship to Jeanette, will, it currently is signed for twenty-five, it will be thirty miles per hour. And then from Jeanette Street to just this side of Breeze Hill will be thirty-five miles per hour. And a little less than a tenth of a mile east of Breeze Hill, it will go to forty miles per hour and it will be forty miles per hour until you exit the city.
Okay, so we're still, this accomplishes two things, gets the speed limit aligned both directions. I think we're still, according to my calculations, lowering the speed in that, especially the one section or two sections there by at least five miles per hour that was previously.
Yes.
And the, some of the, next question is, is how soon can we change the signs and begin enforcing this again? Because I understood we couldn't enforce it until these studies were done, so.
We should be able to get the signs changed probably in the next couple of days. We do all of our signs in-house, so it's just getting, making sure we've got the right stock of those specific speed limits and then going out and posting them. And once they're out, once they're signed, thirty days of warnings and then enforcement at that point.
Do you need the action on behalf of the council to pursue that? Thank you.
The second item I have.
Are you saying it doesn't take any council action to change speed limit? Is that not an ordinance?
You made an action to lower it. We're just reflecting what the law will allow us to do. I think in this area, I mean, Bobby, do you?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the new speed limit sets outlined.
Second, anybody make a second? Mr. Grant, motion. Mr. Yellen seconded. Any comments?
Yes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You, you referred to the speed limit by Canton Marketplace out to the city limits as forty westbound. Is it, is it the same speed limit on both sides at that point?
Yes, it is.
You referred them separately.
And it was supposed to have been the same speed on both sides. They just had not changed the signs.
But it will be now, forty, forty miles an hour.
The signs are already changed.
What, what, what's the difference right now? What is it?
It is forty through there.
Both ways?
Both ways.
Okay, so.
They changed their own signs when we brought it to their attention that it was wrong.
Okay, thank you.
And a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion.
Next item relates to our roll-off site. If you'll, if you'll recall, last fall, we adopted the policy of council, which was to allow for citizens to utilize our roll-off waste collection site at the Ridge Road Public Works, Public Works Facility at no cost. It's been about six months. I have provided a, a chart for you, basically with some information. I would let you know that the number of vehicles per month has increased dramatically since we have done that. Currently, we're on pace to raise about twenty thousand dollars in revenue from individuals that take advantage of that site that are not city residents. The cost of the actual removal of garbage from that site is about sixty thousand dollars a year. So the cost, once we take in those additional revenues, ends up being about forty thousand dollars. And when you break that down by our residential customers, it ends up being about five dollars and fifty cents per household per year. So we're getting a lot of use out of it. It's not an additional burden that's already been budgeted. It's already been covered by the fees that come in through sanitation. One of the things that we are considering moving forward that will give us a little bit better information. Right now, we have four. We, we had three roll-off dumpsters on site. We added a fourth because of the amount that we had coming in. We'll be numbering those dumpsters. And so as it relates to the, the, the roll-off containers, when they're taken out, when they're, when they're disposed of, we'll be able to calculate the actual tonnage that comes from city residents versus the tonnage that comes from non-city residents. Because it's really more about the cost of the tonnage than it is the number of vehicle trips. So that's one of the things that we're working on.
Mr. Russ?
Billy, is this working in terms of the hours that we're open, in terms of the demand we have? Is there any changes needed there?
Currently, the facility is open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And we seem to be not having much of an issue. I will tell you that, you know, the one complaint that we get is on Saturday, for instance, you'll have somebody that brings in almost a roll-off load themselves. Currently, we don't have any parameters as to how much you can bring at any one time. What we try to do, if we have somebody who is, who is calling us about the service and we find out how much they're going to bring and it, it's going to be too much for us to allow other users that same day. We try to see if we can schedule them for a different day of the week where we might not have as much use. Because the last thing we want to do is turn somebody away because we don't have the capacity, because one person has taken advantage of the system that day. That, that, that tends to be the only issue that we have and it's predominantly a Saturday issue.
Are you saying that one person comes in regularly with a full dumpster, full dumpster?
No, not regularly. You just may have one person that, that brings in that amount at one time. Maybe they've moved houses, maybe they cleaned out a, a relative's house or something like that. And, and our preference is to get ahead of them on the communication side and let them schedule so that we know we've got all of this coming and we've got the capacity to hold it at that time. But we don't always get that luxury and we try to work through it, you know, when we have that situation.
I tried to do an estimate based on the first six months and came up with like a twenty-two percent increase. I'm not sure that was correct, but what do you estimate dollar-wise, the additional cost of this free service might be?
It's not substantial.
Now, we do allow, are we allowing out-of-city residents to dump there?
We currently do. The way it is.
No, we charge them.
The way it's set up right now, if you are an out-of-city resident, if you are bringing a vehicle, a regular vehicle, like sport utility vehicle and you're cleaning out the back of your sport utility vehicle, it's twenty dollars. If you're bringing in a trailer up to ten feet, it's forty dollars. If you bring in a trailer over ten feet, it's fifty dollars. If you bring in a box truck, it's seventy-five dollars. Where we have a little bit of discretion is when, when, when our workers out there see that somebody comes in in a ten-foot trailer, but it's only half-full, we charge them half the rate. You know, they try to do the eyeball test on, even though the size may be there, if the quantity that they're dumping is not there, we try to adjust it based on what they're actually utilizing of our facility.
But you, but you're happy with the decision we made to do this, is that what you're?
Well, I.
It's a good service to the residents.
It is a good service to the resident because, you know, it, it, you got somebody who's doing spring cleaning at their house. I mean, technically, they can put that stuff on the curb and waste management will pick it up. But sometimes they want to be rid of it and they don't want to put it on the curb. It's a great service to be able to offer them to come and do this free. You know, it's not technically free because we're taking revenues from the sanitation fund to pay for it, but it's an additional opportunity and it keeps those items off of the roadway and off the curbs.
My, my concern is that, do we, do we have any idea how our charges, which I guess we don't since it's volume versus what the county charges, or, or the county landfill, the county charges for similar amounts? Because we may be doing the unincorporated area a much better favor than even, or at least as good a favor as our residents are getting.
And that's part of the reason why we're moving to the solution of having numbered bins and comparing what we have coming in from outside of the city in tonnage versus what we're actually doing by vehicle.
So you're saying you'd have out-of-county, out-of-city bins?
Correct.
Yeah, I think that would be very revealing.
Yes, yes. But I will tell you, there is a, there's a pretty good chart on here. It may be black and white on yours. It's, it's. It may be black and white on yours. It's, it's this bar chart down at the bottom. The top piece, the lighter color, those are city vehicles. The bottom piece, the darker colors, those are out-of-city vehicles. So we have not seen a substantial increase during the last six months of outside of city vehicles. We have seen a substantial increase from city residents taking advantage of the service. And I think that's what the goal was initially.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that report.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
The only other item.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I took advantage of the dump site last Saturday and there were lots of people there. In fact, he said how busy they would've been. But it was very orderly. There was no confusion I saw. Everyone seems to really appreciate it. I've had some neighbors that use it. Oh, you're right, we can wait on waste management and they'll pick it up. But you don't necessarily want to keep that up there by the curb if you're cleaning out your basement. You know, it's something you can do that day. And our personnel there, the guy worked really hard. I, I think, you know, it's a great service that we provide for our citizens and it keeps it off the streets. You know, we don't have it dumped in the ditch. We don't have it on a vacant lot. I think it's well worth it.
Mr. Robert does an excellent job out there at, at greeting the customer. Yes, ma'am, he has. The only other item that I have really is a discussion item and I, I think Mr. Dyer and I are going to have to sit down about it. We have started having more and more requests for special events related to alcohol. And those events may occur in parks, they may occur downtown. As such, I think we, Mr. Dyer and I are going to have to sit down and carefully look at how those events flow. There's different permitting processes depending on who's providing the alcohol, if it's a nonprofit, if it's a business, if it's a local business, catering permits and, and things like that. Additionally, as it relates to, to utilizing our park space, we have a, a set fee for events. We don't change that fee. We don't currently have a way to change that fee. If it's a major event with more people with alcohol, it probably should be a different fee scale. The insurance liabilities that we require should be different based on what's taking place at those particular events. And so I, I would just mention that probably in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be bringing some recommendations back to you relative to that, that growth in our city. Okay? And if you have any questions or concerns or thoughts in the time being, if you'll provide those to us, we'll try to get that to you in a timely manner. That's all I have.
Anyone else? That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, then we do have an executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn the exec.
Before we adjourn, I want to say, is it Mr. Gant? I want to tell you that I'm so impressed that you stayed for this entire meeting. At your age to sit through this, that's really commendable. So thank you for being here. You give us hope for the future.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion going to executive sessions for potential litigation? Mr. Russ made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. We will not be coming back out for any other action. We wouldn't go?
Looking to come and take a tour, learn more about city hall or local government? Wasn't too many years ago.